Roll call, Danny?
Here.
David?
Here.
Kimberly?
Here.
You up?
Here.
And also here. Meeting has been properly notified and certified. Thank you. Please join me in pledging allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I move on to your conclusions today?
............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
I have two more good school news to share. For my four K ladies, I have visited two of our 4K community sites so far. I'm very glad this Vikings were thrilled to have a visitor. And I got a very enthusiastic tour of every toy in the classroom and learning salon. They're also very eager to share with me their learning life feelings of friendship. It was really nice. And I know that our site directors are very happy to continue our partnership with them. And they'll be looking at those contracts later on in this meeting tonight. And then also, it's more about the IC. Our fourth graders will be embarking on their first ever kindness retreat. So that's a full day program. It's very thoughtful. It required a lot of parents to volunteer to help. So of course, I extend my thanks to all those grateful sign up for that.
Thank you.
I'm number one. Thursday night at the Red Mouse from 4:30 to 9:30 is a spaghetti dinner fundraiser for the band Lemon Trip.
And Saturday night at the Red Mouse was the MHEA scholarship fundraiser. And it was a lot of fun. It was phenomenal. But shout out to the organization team that puts that together. Fundraise for scholarships, for graduates who are going into the field of education. They just organized a really well-run fundraiser. It was a lot of fun.
Other school news? All right. Hearing none, we will move to 3C, which is citizens' comments. I see that we already have one or more citizens signed up to speak this evening. Just reminding you that the Board of Education Policy 197, public participation at board meetings welcomes the input from our community. We ask the speaker to provide their name and their address, and we will be limiting comments to three minutes. And lastly, the purpose of citizen comments is for the board to collect input and not to engage in one-on-one dialogue. So I will call our first citizen, and that would be Karen Bakken. Yes, please.
Thanks. My name is Karen Bakken. I live at 2013 Delphi Drive in Montmore, Wisconsin. Before we move to Montmore, I was a resident of La Crosse, and I worked in the school system up there for seven years with special ed. And I also worked in the charter, the SOTA, in the SOTA 1 and SOTA 2. And so I've been in charter schools, and I've worked in and around them. When I moved to Montmore, I worked at this school with special ed with eighth graders. Now I volunteer at the IC one morning a week with Mrs. Erickson. And I was trying to think, trying to compose what I was going to say tonight, and I'd been practicing on walks with my dog in the morning, and the dog approved what I should say. And he thought it sounded really good. A couple weeks ago, Mrs. Erickson brought in a grandpa of one of the students for show and tell. And this grandpa has come in before, and he's an over-the-road truck driver. And it was fascinating. It was fascinating. The kids were totally engaged in him. And I thought, this is what we need. This is a great program if we would have had him for the whole day, like in the classroom or in a charter. We could have measured the tires, we could have done the math. And he was totally engaged in them. He told them about where he travels, that you need to speak a foreign language where he goes. Then he goes to Mexico, he gets lettuce. He goes to Maine, he goes to Canada, you need a passport. It was all encompassing. And it was a wonderful thing. And I think that if we could just engage in this kind of aspect with a charter, it just brings out a little more. If we could just have more show and tell. Thank you.
And next we have Marilee McKenzie.
Marilee McKenzie, 9842 La Merling. I have spent a lot of time thinking about the process that has unfolded here in this community over the past few weeks and a few months in regards to the proposed Driftless Area Charter School. The last time I spoke here with all of you, I wanted to help you look through the lens of positive experiences. But what I've been really struck by and stuck on in this past few weeks is the resistance, and in some cases, some very strong emotionally tied resistance to this term. So I decided I need to put myself in the imposing view and process from there. I have a few revelations. What I'm seeing as an opportunity many see as unknowns. I have learned that when we approach something that is unknown, we have a lot of fear. And fear stops us from taking risks. Many times, that's a good thing. We probably shouldn't be jumping off cliffs or diving into shallow water. I also thought a lot about the teacher who spoke about her experience with project-based learning. I really appreciated her sharing her perspective. I realized that we have many extremely different experiences. While hers led to a fear of the future of learning in that way, mine has left me with a newfound joy in teaching and learning. So then I started thinking about how our students have extremely different experiences at school. Some of our students are thriving, and some are struggling. Some of our students experience success every single day, and some of our students haven't experienced success in a long time. Some of our teachers find joy and excitement in the unknown, and some of our teachers find comfort in that routine. Some of our families create choice and voice, and some of our families want tradition and stability. Some of our community wants school to look just like school looked and has always looked. And some in our community want to see something different. As I thought about these competing needs, wants, and desires, neither good nor bad, what else was I missing? And then I saw it. When I looked at our differences, I used "and" every single time I was thinking about it, not "or." So here's my ask for you. How are you using "and" in your thinking and in this opportunity? And the risk of entering into a conversation? How can we have a really great school and a partner within it? How can students have access to all the great opportunities in this district and be able to choose a different type of learning that fits their needs? How can teachers feel confident in their curriculum and have the choice to engage in something different? This group is just asking to enter into a conversation and planning with the district and to find ways to work together to make choices. I realize that many of you maybe have already made the decision, but I ask you to think just a little bit more about the idea of a choice. Many times we think of choices as an either-or situation. I would like you to take a minute to think about it as an "and" situation. So as we listen to the rest of the lovely crowd who showed up tonight, I would like you to think about the "and," and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next is Lauren Hollander.
I'm there, Lauren, 0708 Green Drive. I am not going to speak so well. That was harmful. I just want to add on to everything that you just stated. I went to a charter school back in La Crosse well over 20 years ago. So the state of Wisconsin has been, you know, fighting for these charter schools for that long, and they work. The project-based learning works. The students are engaged, the teachers are engaged. And I want you to hear that because it's students first. That's who we're here for. The students need this. It is an option. It is a great option for these kids. Math, science, geography, English, they all are incorporated every day. It's just a program that every classmate of mine was engaged, enlightened. We still talk about it. 25 years later, we still talk about School on the River. So please, continue this conversation with Driftless. They have their act together. They know what they're doing. It will be good for the district. It really will. Another thing I'd like to say is that I work in healthcare right now, and, excuse me, and every year, the hospitals are having to change their policies to be best practice. So even though physicians and nurses, physical therapists, administrators might not have learned that way in school, they are constantly updating to be what is best patient outcomes. So if this is something that we can just change and think about and have a good student outcome, why not try it? Because it might not be how you learn, but it might work. So just think about that. It might be different, but also might really work.
Thank you. Next we have Brenda Fritz.
Hi, I'm Brenda Fritz. I'm the owner, operator of Little Likings. I go for two centers, and so sometimes I have to stop and remember what theme I'm in. We are a proud supporter in our fifth year of the Little Likings 4K program, and I come to you celebrating our sixth year and the renewal of the collaboration. This has been an amazing journey, and the school board and the leadership team that interfaces with our district sites has been amazing. Through 4K and collaboration, childcare centers like mine have the opportunity to support families and children and start their journey in early childhood education while getting services that normally in childcare we never would have been able to tap into while we get to interface with the school district. So what that means on our side is that we're able to maybe get those littles to special services such as speech or physical therapy or therapy that they may not have been able to have access to until they got into a formal kindergarten education. And so it's a great opportunity, and I feel very blessed and privileged that we get to be part of it every year. So I want to thank the board and speak very highly of the leadership team that we get to interface with Nicole Teef and Sarah Straka. They've given resources to our staff such as pyramid model training and making sure that, you know, our teachers and our facilities are supported in the journey. So as a little token, I'm just asking our existing Little Likings 4K kids do their little fingerprints because you touch so many people, and our little fingerprints are things that sometimes we forget about. So I have them get a little fingerprint that says our fingerprints don't fade from the lives we touch. So every day, you know, that our community gets to support the children and families is one day that a fingerprint will probably touch and help us in some way someday. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Steve Austin.
Hi, my name is Steve Austin, and I live at 868 Quarry Road, County Bridgway, Wisconsin, 53582. I'm here tonight as a chairman of Mountmore Education Association, an organization that represents the majority of teachers in our school district. MBTA has not taken a position pro or con regarding the Dax Charter School, but we do have some serious concerns as we've looked over the proposed contract, and we'd like to bring those to the board's attention, that they can be acted on or reviewed before we move forward with this. The first of these is confusion for our employees and our staff. The charter proposal says that we will be employees of the Montmore area school district, but the charter governing council will make all personnel decisions. We don't want to get into a situation where there's two separate and unequal categories of what it means to be a teacher under one roof in one building. Our second issue that we'd like the board to look at is all of the questions and concerns from the staff at the IC. Ms. Lipsko was there on Tuesday night. There were dozens and dozens of really good questions and concerns about how to integrate two programs into one supports us in one building. And the board deserves to take a look and try to work with some of those before we go too far forward with this. Our third concern is just public governance. Some of you will remember a few years ago, parents were upset with the school board. They came to the annual meeting. They stripped the board of their annual stipend. Another group of parents called another annual meeting and restored the annual stipend to the school board. That's not always pretty, but it's local public democracy governing our public school system and how our public tax dollars are used. And the proposed charter doesn't include that, and we believe there should be public governance and public accountability where public money is being spent. Our fourth concern is simply potential future financial liability to the board for the charter school. A prudent and well-written contract would include a limit on future financial liability for the district towards the operation of the charter. We put these four concerns out in an online edition a week ago, and we've had over 100 individuals, employees, residents, parents, sign and affirm their names that they agree with these four major concerns that should be addressed before we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Madeline Potter.
You know, I just really like how charter schools do project-based learning because last year at Annie Byer's classroom, I discovered a way that I thrived and got so engaged in my learning that it was just incredible. I remember wanting to show them off everything. And most of the time, I was just like, ugh, paperwork, paperwork, ugh. But at that time, I was just like, this isn't paperwork. This is fun. And I was engaged, and I really wanted to learn more, and I wanted to research and research and research. And I really love the outdoors, and I didn't even want to leave my classroom to go outside, but I wanted to just do more work and see more stuff and learn more. And that's why I think that would be a great opportunity to have the charter school in our district for families like me and like my brother, who is really smart and really good, but he whizzes through everything. And I feel like he needs more of a challenge, and I need a different learning style. And I think it's good for everyone to take on a new challenge and to have a growth mindset instead of a locked mindset. And just think about how it's not work, it's fun work. And I just really felt like that was amazing opportunity for me to learn that way and have that charter school for other families just like me.
I'm going to ask how old you are.
Fifth grade.
I'm going to feel so impressed by your speaking ability and how thoughtful you are in your presentation. One of our star Vikings, I can tell. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Mandy Potter.
You have to be very proud of that one, don't you?
I am very proud of that one, yes. Thank you. My name is Mandy Potter. I'm an adolescent. My address is 2722, God, it's in Illinois. And I'm here, I've got two kids in the district. Natalie's in fifth grade, my son Benjamin is in second grade. And I have been part of the design team for the charter, so I'm supportive of the charter school. And I guess what I wanted to just say tonight, and we've heard a lot of stuff for all of these meetings, and what I just wanted to say is there's been a lot of talk about the buzzword mindset, as Madeline kind of mentioned. I think what you were eloquently trying to get at was mindset and growth mindset versus fixed mindset. And I know that the district curriculum really embraces a growth mindset and really tries to use it as a tool to positively impact our kids and to learn in different ways and to think differently. And I feel like I hope that the board, with this decision, with this proposal with the charter embodies and embraces a growth mindset and not a fixed mindset as we move forward with all of the options with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Lori Hitten.
I'm Lori Hitten. I'm at 406 Oak Street, and as you know, I'm part of the design team. I just want to thank you for your consideration, for the dialogue. I'm grateful to have the opportunity to be engaged in the future of education. It's very exciting, and I'm sure would welcome many of you to the board as well. And I'm thrilled to hear from teachers. As we've said from the beginning, we want to have teachers involved. We approached the board about visiting staff meeting or hosting their shared information session or attending Tuesday's meeting. So I'm very happy that teachers are coming to the table now, and I'm thrilled to have them here. So I just want to say too that I see great potential. As you know, as board members, a vote for a letter of intent tonight is not a vote to open the school. It's to address questions like the teachers have, to address questions that you have, to address questions that we on the designing have. It's a vote to go forward in conversation to determine whether or not we can open a school. It's not a vote to determine to open a school. So I'm grateful for the folks who take time to consider it, to investigate what it might mean, and I look forward to further conversation. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stuart Mitchell, 406 Oak Street, Montmore. I'm standing here as a parent. I assume that IC and others, PC, they're typical kids, doing well, no real needs that initial needs that really are needed. Like they go through K-12 without any hiccups. And I'm just fine. I'm sure that there are lots of other situations that they would put themselves in, and that would be great. But I'm interested in standing here just to voice my opinion, to say that I would, that we should vote to support the partnership with the Driftless School. This is an opportunity to bring something new and engaging to our district, provide families with an option, provide teachers with an option, for those who are looking for something new and engaging. I feel like it will really strengthen our district. Project-based learning, when done right, and this is going to be done right, has been shown to help students of all types succeed in the right ways. Yes, increased test scores are the data's out there, but it also increases confidence, increases their motivation for learning, increases their critical thinking skills, and increases their communication skills. And I want that for my kids. If the district provides this opportunity, I'll be the first to sign my kids up. If the district forces the Driftless School to go out independent, I would still be the first, I would still be the first to sign my kids up. I really believe strongly in this Driftless School. I think that this charter school would be wonderful. And I do know, and I want to acknowledge that there are risks for partnering, but please also acknowledge the risk of passing on this opportunity. I encourage you to partner with the Driftless School tonight to provide further options. Thank you.
Next, we have K.W. Bakken.
Uh, thank you, Diana. You know, I was here about six weeks ago when I'm told, um, I'm sort of talking to teachers who actually teach in charter schools right now and how much they enjoy having the freedom to teach. But that's not why I'm here tonight. As a matter of fact, I had no intention of attending tonight, except last week I was approached by a member of our community, who had a friend of mine in Miller's Grocery Store, of all places, who had read the article in Concord Mail. And she told me that she'd heard from members of our school district that this charter school and the grant is another attempt for Donald Trump and Betsy DeVos to take over public education. Those are her words to me. I was bothered by that perception because perception is sometimes reality. And while I tried to tell her that I don't think that was right, I contacted some people, both at the Wisconsin Resource Center for Charter Schools and the Department of Public Instruction. I'd like to read the first one I got from Nick Protasky, who is the Associate Director of the Wisconsin Resource Center for Charter Schools and a DPI employee. "He, I want to get a note back to you, let you know that I did not forget my promise to you or to get back to you a resource explaining how charter schools have had bipartisan support throughout their history. We are working with National Group Charter School Founders Library to help us put together a concise and accurate document explaining the history of charter schools and the CSP grants. Having said this, the resource will not be completed until later this November. In the meantime, it is important to know that the current $95 million grant the DPI received from the federal government was not created nor applied for during our current administration." He referred me to the administrative grant and said, "I'm not gonna read this whole document, it's four pages long, but I have her contact information of that and I wouldn't have given it to you sooner except I was up there cutting firewood for our deer camp." And this is from Chanel Carter, the administrative grant. But she just goes on to explain that these grants have been recurring over the last 20 years. And the current grant that we're talking about right now was actually part of the, back in the day, there's Elementary and Secondary Education Act, which was replaced by the No Child Left Behind Act, which has now been replaced by the Every Student Succeeds Act, which was signed into law by Barack Obama in December 2015. So the money we're talking about right now was actually appropriated and approved by President Obama in 2015. So for those people who may be spreading a rumor around Noah's Grocery, that this is a tent by Donald Trump and Betsy DeVos to take over public education, I've got the documents right here to say that simply isn't true. So if that was one of your concerns, please put it away, Diana. So thank you, Diana, for letting me talk to you.
Thank you. Next we have, do you have any?
Three minutes. All right, three minutes, two ten south first, Montmore. Uh, I'm coming here once again in support of the charter school. Um, and I have it down to three main points. Uh, one is financial. As a taxpayer, I feel that this is an opportunity to bring in money and students back into our district. Um, in fact, I know a number of families who've moved out for other educational opportunities outside of Montmore. They flat out moved. Um, we have a high percent, higher percentage rate of homeschool students compared to area schools. Um, we also have a number of students that we don't know the data on because they're choosing private schools. So we are losing per people funding. I believe that this charter school bringing in $700,000 to this district could actually attract students into our district. Therefore, we, we could receive more per people funding. Logistics, um, I have worked in districts that have had charter schools. I did a long-term subassignment in Badger Ridge at Core Knowledge Charter School, working with K through eight. Um, within that, I didn't see any problems. Actually, I was kind of like, didn't want to go in and teach in a charter school, but I'll try it. And I was surprised at the outcomes. I also was very much impressed with how kids in the middle school seamlessly went to the middle school for certain classes that weren't provided within Core Knowledge. Um, I, I believe it can be done. We have a lot of area charter schools that are successful. Uh, we just had a state report card come out. If you look at Verona, some had, I believe there was 88.1 rate. So it does work. Um, the other thing is when we make decisions about education, I think it's really important to consider who we are making them. Is it what teachers need? Sometimes, but really, we're all here for students. Uh, so I believe that creating an option for students to learn, personalized learning works. We have students that learn differently, have different needs. We just heard this, where did she go? She ran away.
She ran off.
Um, wonderful. I think that's, speaking from the heart of how a student experiences education. Change is hard and research shows that as educators, we teach the way we were taught. So yes, this is different. It doesn't mean it's wrong, but it, it does have the ability to maybe open up and create some awesome results. Um, if we consider this decision with students in mind, I feel this would open up and expand the learning opportunities within Montmore. And for new families looking at Montmore to move in, it might be a very attractive feature of like, hey, there's an option for my child. Because we all know, oops, every child's unique and every child needs something different. Um, and then finally, I think this is my motherhood haunting me, I grabbed a pen, failure is not an option. So that speaks to aerospace love of our three kids, but it also speaks to their need for project-based learning and how they experience education and we have to see, see a lot of outside project-based opportunities for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Amy Jester.
Amy Jester, eighty-four oh three County Road PD in Verona. And we are one of those families who decided not to engage them in homeschool because there weren't our options. And I know I've talked to you before, but what I really want you to think about is that a lot of decisions we make as parents and as keepers of schools are based on a fear. We are afraid that we are going to get blamed if something goes wrong. We are afraid of change. We are afraid of the unknown. And I think a lot of those things, like God, how we make decisions, and instead we really need to think of what are the opportunities we have. And you have a really great opportunity here, a great opportunity to keep kids in the district rather than, you know, if the charter school spins up and goes out, you'll have people leave the district. You have people looking for other options, you have people homeschooling and doing other things. And you have an opportunity to do something really cool here. Um, so you have the opportunity to serve more students, you have an opportunity to keep teachers within the district, you have an opportunity to keep students in the district, to keep those families in the district. You, and you have a great opportunity to bring new lessons, new ideas into the district. Yes, it might be in the charter school, but they are still district employees and those lessons spread. And so you have an opportunity to bring in parallel dollars that you don't have access to otherwise. And so lessons can be learned and then applied in other parts of the school, which, how awesome is that? You know, research dollars, professional development, all of that can benefit the, all of the school district as a result of having a charter school. The charter school has all sorts of accountability. You keep that, taxpayers keep that, you still are, you know, you still have all of the accountability. If the charter school is not doing well, you can design that charter such that they can go away. And so there's very little risk and there's a lot of opportunity. You just have to be pretty courageous in saying, yes, we want to move forward with it. And moving forward here is really just saying, we're willing to talk. And so we're willing to keep talking, we are willing to try to work this out. And I think that these conversations are great, but at some point you have to say, we're willing to take the next step and be courageous in to start, so that I'm encouraging you.
Thank you. Next we have Dan Rodiger.
Hello, I'm Dan Rodiger, twenty-four fifteen County Road Z, out in Blue Mountains. Uh, I got Lillian, third grade, I got Gregory, first grade, Hank is three, he'll be here soon. Y'all better watch out. Um, first of all, I'm here to speak in support of the Driftless. Um, I'm not sure, I'm a teacher, um, so, not currently, but ten years I taught. So I went UW, um, out of there, substitute taught Madison District, did ten years at McFarland, um, just worked with Damon a little bit over there. I was high school social studies teacher, I was department chair, I was in the Curriculum Council. I chaired the Social Studies Curriculum Council. I'm nationally board certified, I'm there, I get it. Um, I know how teachers are, I, I'm one of you guys. And so when I hear some of the questions and concerns you have, I think we're a lot closer than we are further apart. But you're absolutely right, we, there's risk. And the way that we address risk and handle risk and accomplish risk is dialogue. And we want to sit down with the teachers. We want this to work, you want this to work. I want to sit down side by side with teachers, let's roll up our sleeves and let's get into that charter. And the charter is the instrument by which we can really shape that school. And so we'll work closely with the board, work closely with the teachers, that is our goal. This cannot be done to you as a teacher, this needs to be done with you. And the way it's done with you is dialogue and exchange of ideas and back and forth. It has to be something that both the board agrees to and that DACS agrees to. And I think the board and agreeing to it certainly look to the teachers to make sure that they're at least understanding of, of the direction that they're taking. So I certainly understand where we're coming from. Um, I also understand that if you want to do something you never, you want to go somewhere you've never been, you gotta do something you've never done. And so, yes, this is a risk, yes, it's something new. Right, and with the charter, collectively working together, we can build a structure that limits that risk, that defines that risk, that makes sure there's not financial accountability concerns. We can certainly do that in the charter. And what I recognize for tonight is just the first step. This isn't the end. We don't walk away here and the school starts. This is an agreement to continue a dialogue. And what's gonna happen then is a whole lot of meetings and a whole lot of discussion until we're comfortable. And getting there is going to be uncomfortable. I think about as a teacher, I don't want my students to be comfortable all the time, we gotta push them. We gotta challenge them. And as a teacher, I want to be pushed and challenged too. And this is a great opportunity to do that. Again, it's easy to be comfortable, but that's not where magic happens, it's gotta be pushed. And so what I'm looking for here is, let's try something different, let's have that push, but let's make sure we define the risk and work together in the charter to make sure that we're at least comfortable taking that risk. So appreciate the board's time, appreciate the dialogue, thank you a lot, you've heard from me quite a bit, so. Uh, just really thank you very much and again, looking forward to continue our dialogue, partnership, and certainly sitting down with teachers and have some more conversations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Tina Mauer.
Whoop, I'm good. Hi, I'm Tina Mauer, I'm through tonight, Portion three, South in Verona. Um, I'm a fourth grade teacher at the IC and I was a little bit on the fence about speaking tonight because speaking in front of adults is a lot harder than speaking in front of adults. Um, so I just want to say that, first of all, I think that it's really heartening to see that we all do have the same goal, which is, um, to help kids and to make sure that they have the best environment possible to learn in. And I truly believe that everybody here has that hope in mind. Um, and, um, I can't speak for all staff at the IC, but I was at the IC listening session and of course I can speak for myself. So I think I'd just like to make clear that we are not against, um, new, we are not against change. We are not against, um, we, we have this very same understanding, and especially as educators, that children have diverse needs. The, education is not one size fits all. We have a better understanding of that than most people do. So when I, when we hear, um, feedback in the community saying that we are against that, it's just simply not true. Um, what is our concern would be definitely the things that Steve Austin mentioned, but I also want to make it clear that one of the biggest concerns is not the charter school proposal itself. In fact, I totally support supporting kids in different ways. Our concern, most staff concern, is having the charter school within the walls of the IC. There are a lot of concerns that I, I won't mention here, but would definitely be happy to discuss further with anybody. Um, but there are a lot of logistics that go into, um, running a school, being a part of a school, um, and, and making sure that we reach that number of one goal, which is that we reach students in the appropriate way. Um, we do have, as a public school, a curriculum to maintain, we have instructional minutes to maintain, we have IEPs to consider, we do have bylaw, um, you know, those things that we have to follow. So, um, I, I guess, you know, as I said, I definitely wasn't prepared to like go on about it, but I, I would like to say that the IC staff are not, um, closed off to the idea that children need, uh, different things. And I don't know what's going on at Miller's, but I never heard about that, so. Never heard that, I mean, staff, I'm crazy over there. What is happening over at Miller's? That was never something that was brought up. But, um, also one last thing would be, was the, I think that I just wanted to mention was the concern of the, the age difference between a third grader and a fifth grader, making those up in the same room, that was also, also brought up. But, um, I just mostly wanted to get up and just say that the teachers I know are not against, um, knew they're not against change, but we do want to engage in a dialogue about having the school in the IC, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You got any additional assistance comments?
Yes, we do.
Oh. We have Angela Willetts.
Hello, I'm Angela Willetts, five oh five Viking Road. Um, I wasn't sure I was gonna be able to speak because I didn't know about the sign up, so I thank you for letting me in. Um, so I have three kids, um, first grader and a fifth grader in the district. And then I have a sixth grader who's at Winger School, um, in Madison. Ugh, I have a little emotional. I wish he was here. I wish he was in Montmore. I think our schools are incredible. Um, my two younger kids are having a wonderful experience for the most part. Um, and my oldest ran into trouble in fourth grade and he had a wonderful teacher. Um, so many, uh, options around supports were in place and just within the, um, within the structure and format of the school as is, it was not going to meet his needs. He refers to fourth grade as the Great Depression. Um, I don't know that he actually was depressed, but that's his way of capturing how bad he felt about himself in fourth grade. Um, and when we made the switch to Winger in fifth grade, which, um, Winger is a project-based learning private school and at that time, well, Winger's structure is third through fifth grade combined and it worked really well. Um, we saw this kid just come alive and walk out of the school, out of his classroom every day, um, just feeling really good about himself. And I think that the overall structure of what Winger could provide was what he needed and there's, you know, I have no complaints about the structure of the IC for, uh, you know, specifically, but it just, it couldn't adapt to, uh, meet his needs. So I'm in support of the charter school to, um, provide another option, uh, for kids who need it. And, you know, my other two kids, I don't necessarily think that they need it, but for my oldest, he did. And so it means we're schlepping to Madison every day and we're paying basically a new car every year to be able to get him what he needs. And I, I really wish that we had had this option, uh, when he was struggling, um, starting in really third and then in fourth grade. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Steve.
Uh, good evening, Steve, two seven, two ten, South First Street. And, uh, I want to take you guys back to last spring, I think most of you were in the room. Um, I remember coming up here and talking, uh, to you guys and, and excited about our son who's part of the Xmas group, who's had the opportunity in a private-based research team. And, uh, I think it was the first time it was done that I know of in the district. And I remember standing here saying, they had such a great experience and I hope this type of thing, the district can build on this and, you know, these opportunities exist for other students. Uh, the neat thing about this Xmas team was, uh, they went on to a competition and won the national, um, national award. I mean, our, the team from this school district performed the best nationwide in these college schools. So, um, it shows that this stuff can work for students in our district. It shows that there is a percentage of this district that will thrive with this and do well with it. And I think there is a, there is a place for this. And so I'm encouraging you guys to, to take a very, uh, close look at this. Uh, secondly, I'll just keep this one real short. Um, I was an administrator in a middle school, um, regular middle school, middle, middle school in which a charter school was then placed in our building. Uh, the charter school was younger grades, three through five. And oddly enough, it was a Mandarin Chinese language-based charter school. And so when I hear the questions that people have about how does this work, I understand it's, it's a challenge. At the same time, we were easily able to make, I shouldn't say easily, but over time, you can iron up the option to figure out how it works. The logistics can be taken care of. There are solutions to almost every problem you bump into. And, uh, so don't let that be a barrier in this city.
Thank you. Uh, Annie Byer.
Hello. I'm the buyer, one zero four, South Sixth Street, in Montmore. I'm wondering if I could sit down and talk.
Please.
Um, I'm just a little dizzy, so I spent a long day, I don't know if it's that or just, um, listening to one of my former students talk and get all emotional. So, um, I'm a working teacher at the IC. And I think first of all, I want to say, I wish, um, the teachers at the IC would have had the opportunity to know about the charter school earlier. Um, we would have loved to have had the team come and present the ideas and then we could have raised questions we had and then we could have had some questions answered and not reacted the way we did instead of responding. Because I really believe we all want the same thing. And when I heard my former student speak, it was funny because I don't call myself a project-based learning instructor. I just, um, I question my students a lot and I love projects myself and I love, um, interacting and creating and I like listening to my students and I take their lead. So, I guess when I think about this, growth mindset comes up. And in my classroom, I teach about the zones and in the center of the circle is the comfort zone. And we all like to be there because, you know, you can just hang back and not do much. And then there's the stretch zone, which is where all learning occurs, where we're pushed to our edge and we learn new things and we grow dendrites. And we might get uncomfortable, but we can also get excited there because we're trying new things. new things. And then there's the panic zone. And I explain to my students that in this classroom, I don't want you to get to a panic zone, and if you do, please let me know. I would like you to be comfortable every once in a while, but my job here is to have you in the, in the stretch zone. And I think we forget that sometimes as adults, and at least I can always be, being a teacher in a classroom is, you know, yes, I want my job to be easy, I want to do what I've done because I feel comfortable doing that. But there is such an excitement and a passion that comes from listening to your students and learning from them. And I just hope that, you know, whatever happens, that we can remember that being in the stretch zone is where learning occurs. And if we're here for kids, I think we're all on board with, we want kids to be learning. And I think that having this opportunity for some kids would really give them an opportunity to be in the stretch zone. I think it would give them an opportunity to have some experiences they might not have in some classrooms. In my room, I not only ask questions and want students to be problem solvers, but I want them to try things they've never done before, because I want them to believe in themselves, because I believe in them. So I'm just wondering if anything would be hurt by moving ahead and having that discussion.
Other citizens comments? Other citizens comments? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to four personal presentations. Question by Jeff, second to my left. Further discussion? Was it Jeff and Ed? Jeff and Ed?
Okay, thank you.
I think, like, you really spoke at the same time.
Okay.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, aye, opposed. Motion carries. Let me answer the consent agenda, is there anything anybody would like to say? Question by Jeff, second to my left. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, aye, opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to six discussion items. First discussion item, 6A, is Community Legislative Engagement Subcommittee State Budget Update with Mr. Raffice, Mrs. Lee O'Leary, and Mrs. Corbin St. James.
So you had the second meeting on the month when we are in session in that committee, we do an update on what's happening at the state level and local level terms of legislation and advocacy. So we did resume this committee about a week ago for our fall. Again, we're happy that we have teachers and current reps on that, that's a nice blend for us to work with. So we are working on two letters right now that will eventually make their way to you. The first is in regard to Steve and I going to the village to let them know that we received $105,000 left this year for the PPI. That is a result of our families using the Parental Choice Program and taking voucher money to High Point. As you know, this is Mount Hore's first private school in our district. We did have to add busing to that school this year, so there is some real financial cost involved, it's not just a figure out there. We hope that the village would be amenable to perhaps adding to their public tax insert to show more transparency. Currently, they do use a little pie chart that divvies out how our money is spent. There is not a chart that represents though, that our public tax money is now also going to private, and we hope that we could start sharing that. They voted no. And so as a response, this committee would like to write an educational letter to the Mount Hore Mill, consideration about how that's becoming works and what it could look like in the future. So after that, we'll be sure to get it to all of you for your attention. And then on our second letter, we are working with our equalization aid schedule. This is a matter that's a hot topic right now. It was, we'll hear about it in January at our convention. So what you probably know is that every district in our state receives state aid, it does not come in equal payments, however. It would be very beneficial for all the districts to have it in equal payments, because some districts are now faced with the option of having a short-term borrow. Specifically, our September payment that we all receive is one of the smaller ones at 15%. September is when our schools are giving away what we really need the most, or at least equal about, to help that district that needs to short-term borrow, they're becoming more and more. And the reason it's not equal right now is that the state does make interest money off of this. So they've designed it as such that we eventually get our money, but we want to plan for this in the future. So this does have vital parts of support. We think that there is a good chance that if we step one in, sort of reshape those systems, so that is where our second letter will be going to. Ron, is there anything that you wanted to say?
Well, the one thing I would add is that, one thing that we'll continue to do is look for ways to engage the community, better educate the community about issues affecting public education, and we look forward to doing that as we continue our work as a committee.
No, you guys covered it all. Okay, I'm very pleased to see. Okay. Do we have any questions? We will move on to 6B, report on the AASB Legislative Advocacy Conference.
I am doing this one. So this was a very interesting conference that was held on the first Saturday in November. And there were two sessions that were particularly interesting to me. One was a session on enrollment trends in the state, which was very interesting. And then after lunch, there was a session that was led by Charles Franklin, who's the professor at Marquette Law School, who runs the statewide Marquette Poll. And that was a really interesting dissection of essentially how the, how the voting public in, in the state views public education. And it was really very interesting to see the difference in public opinion about public education and how it's, how it's grown since 2011, 2012. And it, the, the two lines were very close together in 2011 and 2012, and they've grown very far apart now. The predominant, the predominant opinion of people in the state is great support for public education. The lines literally have gone like this over time, and so great support for public education across the state.
I will add to that, that that support is really heartwarming, what do you think, that only 30% of registered voters have school-aged children? So that's a nice trend out. Also, on fiscal news, we learned that the federal data release coming for June of 2020. That's part of the Every Student Succeeds Act, which we heard a little bit about prior, and citizens comments passed in December of 2015. This particular data is going to show us how much per pupil spending is actually happening between districts versus an estimate for taxpayers to compare district to district. This will be interesting and controversial if perhaps districts are spending the same amount of performance data as different. So that's something I'm sure that Steph has been looking forward to, and we are looking forward to that as well, to see how we're doing. They talked a bit about demographics. In our state, overall, our student population continues to decline, especially in rural and urban areas, where areas like Mount Hore, the suburbs sort of wholly stay. But they did note that we are having an increase in Hispanic and Asian populations in the school, and that we should be looking at hiring to meet those needs.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you for turning that. Appreciate that.
I didn't.
Okay, we move on to 6C, in the schoolwork convention. So as we all know, the schoolwork convention happens the second, third week in January, and there are several, I believe, for number twos, we just kind of wanted to count to see how many board members would be attending. We have a block of rooms reserved, and if we can't get all the rooms, it's better, of course, we could just release some, so others may attend from other districts. To the exact dates. Okay. First-ish, 22nd or 23rd?
Do you believe on Tuesday night, because the first meeting on Wednesday morning is bright-eyed, it's in 7:30, 8 o'clock? Whether they, is it a usual Friday afternoon or midnight?
When is that if the governor will speak?
Not yet.
So does anybody, I will be using. I can send off a Tuesday night's conference.
I need to figure it out.
Okay. I also need to figure that out.
Is Jeff, Jeff here?
Jeff. Thank you. As it gets closer, for those who sent it going, usually arrange some sort of carpool. Even the school vans, we've taken a suburban and fast, and so that we have to grab ourselves. So keep that in mind. That's usually Tuesday afternoon, Monday afternoon, we make free lunch, so those lines are always tough for us to deal with. So just keep that in mind, and we will touch base on that again in the future. All right, moving on to 6C, discussion of awards for 19 superintendents' goals and processes to be used for superintendents' evaluation.
Great, thank you. So I think there are a couple of things that we could talk about. There is a document that I've prepared that you don't have, because it's not quite ready to go. But I think we need to make a fundamental decision about what that document will do, what, what path it takes us on, whether we want the assessment to be entirely qualitative, or whether we want a quantitative measure as part of that assessment as well. We talked a little bit about that last time, but that's sort of the fundamental decision that we have to make about the instrument that we, that we use. Do we want it to be entirely qualitative, which admittedly will be more work for us? Or do we want it to be quantitative, which, at least in parts, which can streamline the process a little bit? But I'm not sure. And one of the reasons why I think we headed in this direction to start was to try to get away from quantitative numbers that we've, that we've used in the past that may or may not have any particular meaning. From, from my perspective, I mean, the reason that I, that I wanted us to explore this path in the first place was that I think that a qualitative assessment is far more meaningful. And, and so I would advocate for it, but I think we need to, I think we need to talk about it. And then I also see that there's a mock-up of what we might use next year, as, as we receive information and advocacy reports. But maybe the best thing to do is talk about sort of fundamentally, when it comes to the assessment itself, literally the document that we use, and the document that we would provide to Dr. Salerno, do we want that, and this is next year, it's not the document that I'm talking about. Do we want that document to be qualitative, or, or quantitative, or parts of each? That's, that's the decision that we have to make. And, and just so you know, the document that I constructed, essentially, at the head, at the top of the page says, "Here's the general priority in rank order," right? So one of the four priorities that we talked about, here's, here's that in rank order, and then here are the three or four, I don't think we went past four, here are the four priorities. And under each of those priorities, the question is asked, "How has the superintendent performed on this metrics over the past 12 months, and how would we like to see that performance over the, over the next?" And that's, that's a simple qualitative assessment. And then we would use that same assessment for each of the priorities under each of the, the general categories that we've, that we've been talking about.
I, I think it, it needs to have a qualitative component to it. If we try to make it solely qualitative, we're just going to wind up going compelled to put some qualitative in there anyway.
I think that's right.
How would you, how would you categorize what we did last year to you?
It's part, it's part both.
Okay.
It's both. There was the, the, there was the sort of the quant, the number, the quantitative number that sort of, that we thought, I don't believe this, but thought gave us direction from past performance. And then there was a qualitative description of what we thought that meant.
And one of the discussions we had was turnover in board members.
Correct.
So we were talking about numbers that didn't come from that exact same group of people, right?
That's correct. The other thing that, that I, that I thought then, I still think now, is that if we're comparing one number at 2.5, right, on a scale of five, to 2.4, is that, is that meaningful? I mean, I don't think so. I'm not, I'm not a mathematician, I'm a writer, but that doesn't mean, that doesn't make any sense to me statistically. So I, I think what I would, what I would ask the group for is if there's other direction that you, that, that you want me to take, if there's a different path that you think we should be moving on, let, let me know, and I can incorporate that into the document that I have prepared, and then, and then we can, we can talk about it. But there is a document that's prepared and ready to go now that isn't, as I said, is entirely qualitative in, in nature, but, but we can certainly make adjustments to it. I want it to be, I want it to be right.
So I ask, does anybody just write a paragraph of probably things about the session?
Right, well, I think, I mean, I would envision us having a session, a session where we, where we talk, we could either do that before or during a discussion. I think we want to have a, a discussion as a board about where we, where, try to come to some consensus on, on each of those priorities. It might make sense for us to complete that form before we get there, but I, I think we, I think, I think one way or the other, we should, that can be done, and we can compile our, our thoughts and have a document that we can deliver to, a meaningful document that we can deliver to the superintendent. But I mean, I think the important thing is that we arrive at those answers by, we arrive at those assessments by consensus. That's an important part of the process. So unless someone suggests a different approach, or wants to tack on something quantitative, I can bring that document to the next, or have that document circulated in time for the next meeting, and we can, we can take it from there.
Well, the math, I like that, the quantitative also. I think that's the best.
That's fair enough. It's fair enough.
I like the quantitative for comparisons, not, "Last year was a 2.5, this is a 2.4."
Right.
But in this area, it's a three, and in this area, it's a two. Where should you focus your attention, on the two, not the three? So in, within one year, I think the comparison's valuable.
So this is a really interesting question, because it's a question that pollsters run into all the time. So you have a rank order, which we've already done, right? We've ranked the four categories, we've ranked the subcategories underneath those. Okay, so those are in priority order. What, what you're essentially suggesting is, how do we, what, what, how important are they in comparison to?
No, we're judging performance on this.
Well, but that, ultimately, that's what you just said, though, right?
No, we're judging which areas have a higher performance level, and which ones need to be focused on for next year's goal setting.
Which means they're more important?
No, no, the performance was lower.
No, that's what I mean. That's what, you're nice, we're talking the same language.
No, I'm not prioritizing the descriptor, I'm, I'm saying, how's the performance?
No, I know, but then you just said, but then that's what he has to work on. That means it's more important than the other.
No, we've already identified their importance.
Okay. I'm just trying to tease out what that means. I'm not, I'm, I'm not, you're the, you're the math guy. I shouldn't, I shouldn't argue with the math guy.
No, I, I just think there's still some validity to it. No, I just think there's still some validity to, well, to the numbers, but I'd also be curious, from the receivers, you might, is one easier to digest and wrap your head around in terms of what does my board want me to do? Is one preferable to another? Or clearer than another? I think it would be helpful for me to have something that would just basically say, keep doing this, stop doing that.
Right.
And then that would help me to understand what your goals are. And that's where I think the numbers are helpful because if we've got four descriptors and the highest score you can get is a four, and three of them are a four, and one of them's a two, then it's keep doing these, but this is what needs some attention. And you're saying, well, this is more important. No, it's the one that needs more attention because the others are already there.
So does that, does that look like possibly, I'm just throwing out ideas, taking those four broad categories and, four broad categories, and saying, in general, as we have our discussions and then come up with some sort of verbiage around those, in general, this is the one that needs more attention over the next year. Could it look like that, or does it have to be like four versus two versus one?
We could probably get at that same point through qualitative data.
Well, I'm not so sure.
It would take more, it might take more time, although probably not, because even when we have the numbers, we debate the validity of the numbers anyway, so we're going to discuss it anyway.
Here's the good news, though. The good news is we're only going to be comparing numbers within the set that we're, that we're going to be collecting on, right?
As opposed to comparing to the years past, which was nonsense. Because that was really not.
So this is actually pretty cool. So I think what we could do is, we can choose what we think is the right scale, but let's ask a quantitative question to get to that answer, and then we send around a survey that says, here, on this scale, what's the rating? And then we have an open text box, and people can, can offer their qualitative feedback, and then we take it from there. I think that's a perfectly good suggestion. Right?
Not if the majority would rather just skip the quantitative and just do the test, and we also do that.
I mean, there's a part, there's a part of me that says we've already done the qualitative ranking of what's the most important. That's why we ranked these things by priority. But that's different, as you say, it's different from performance.
So Karen, do you have any thoughts? Can I maintain that I just want to do a thoughtful statement? What's the most clear to see is what I want to work this way to do.
I definitely don't want to do it against that shirt. Other than that, I'm kind of single, whatever makes the most sense to you, like, that's...
Well, I propose we could get at the same end if we just had that conversation as we were coming up with some verbiage for each category. We could get to the same end.
I feel like I need to see the document to know, like, wrap my brain around it.
Maybe we can circulate that.
Do we want to talk about this again, or do we want to use the, we've seen the document, so just trying to look forward as quickly as we can.
Can we do that the next board meeting, close actually?
To actually complete it.
Because it's due in December, right?
Right, with everybody looking at it beforehand. I guess we could do that unless somebody has extreme concerns about the document and when you look at it.
So we'll get the document ahead of time.
Yes, sir.
But we won't be completing it.
I think you could, if you wanted to, if you really want to, you know, think about it and formulate your thoughts, and I think, for me personally, I would be able to end a meaningful conversation if I thought about it beforehand and kind of broke down some thoughts or ideas. But, you know, we can do what works for you.
Okay.
Good.
Awesome.
Great.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. All right. That's D, moving on to seven, action items. Seven A is consideration of request to charge school letter intent. This is an action, so I will give you a motion.
So I don't, I don't know if you need the lead document or shirt, which one? The, um, the intent letter. So I'm going to clarify based on comments that we heard tonight. So the text there says that the letter of intent is saying, we intend to complete a contract. We intend to draw a charter. That's what we're saying, we have the intent.
That's correct. In order to apply for the grand dollars, the folks from the county get it, we have to have the language.
Do you have a motion? I will ask three times if you have a motion. We have a motion on this action, consideration of request to charge school letter intent. I will entertain a motion on this item, charge school letter intent. And third time, we have a motion on this action and consideration of request to charge school letter intent. Hearing no motion. This item fails for lack of a motion, and we will move on to seven B, policy, second reading. This is student physical examinations, policy 453.5, referred by safety and safety.
Good evening, board members. This was shared with the Safety and Wellness Committee that we're meeting again in October. Brian, would you care to speak for the work being done around school nurses? And their policies within the school nurses? Yeah, you're not pulling the word right now.
So we're currently on a trend, which you'll notice in safety and wellness, if we were looking at the school nurses' policies that relate to student health, that kind of directly have that correlation, two connections to the school nursing and what we're seeing in our program. So this one was kind of a simple one at first glance, which we are finding that most of them are, which was just to add the word I into the policy. As we kind of progressed further, we made a few additional changes. At the last meeting during the first reading, the other grades had some, like, it made it seem like if somebody didn't get an I exam, that then they couldn't come to school. And so we provided additional clarification on that, and hopefully that clarification will meet, meet your needs. That just ultimately says, you know, kind of a period in between, right? That regular physical eye and dental examinations are strongly recommended for all children. However, a building principal in consultation with the applicable county health departments could require medical appointment and or clearance for entry to school. So those, what we're really trying to get at in that point, right, is that if there was a measles outbreak, if there was something, you know, H1N1, if there was something really big, that there could be something that we could check and that there could be a clearance for entry to school. And so hopefully that that will meet your, meet your needs and clarify.
That's fair enough, that's much clearer now, thank you. It's not ambiguous anymore.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Leah, seconded by Danny. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Moving on to C, policy first reading, release time for students, policy 434, referred by Education Committee.
Good evening. Sarah Straka and the Education Committee met back in early November here. And Sarah, would you mind speaking with the policy?
Definitely. Well, the short policy, we didn't make too many changes. The reason why we first looked at the policy was for the second paragraph. There was language pertaining to the vocation.